And I have 5:30. Call a meeting to order. Please raise your eyes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and thank you for everybody coming out. First off, a little bit of, I have to ask, is there any amendments that we need to add? And there was one though, I did see on that peddler's license.
Or vendor's license.
Vendor's license?
Yeah.
We need to add that to the agenda somewhere?
Yep. And she is, Shannon is coming, right?
Yeah, she is.
Okay.
She'll be here at 6:00.
Okay.
Okay.
So what it deals with is a vendor's license involving, associated with an event at the Opera House.
Yeah, you can put it right next to taxi license.
The, just so you know, my, the event is on April 29th, so that's why this is-
Yeah, because she submitted it to me on April 4th. I forgot I even had it until she called me and it's like, "Oh, I'm sorry." I said, "Well, amend the agenda so that we could get it on."
Sure, not a problem. Okay, we're going to visitors and we're gonna have Paula from the Bixby Library do a presentation and then we'll open up the council to ask questions.
I'm just, uh, needing to crank up my machine a little bit and get it running.
Would you like the lights to go down?
No, I don't, I think you can see it just fine, actually. And I'm gonna try to stay out of Joan's way so that she can see it as well. I am the president of the Bixby Library Board and-
Actually, let's, let's kill a few lights here. Okay, so I, it's very hard to see, I'm just, I'm not gonna shut them all down, just the right ones in the right spot, maybe, nope, not that one.
How's that?
Is that better?
Is that better for all of you? Okay.
Everybody go to sleep now.
Okay, yeah, that's right. I'm sorry, you have to kind of crane your necks a little bit, I guess, to see it. I'm gonna start off and just talk about Andrew Carnegie, who was possibly the richest man in America in all times. He donated the equivalent in $2,015 of $78 billion for philanthropy and he built 3,000 public libraries. He truly believed that people should use their money to contribute and improve society. So as you know, the Bixby serves the residents of five towns, including Virgens. The free in the name of the Bixby Library is because we offer service to all residents and I'm here today, first of all, to thank you for your past support of the library. But I'd also like to focus on three points. First of all, describing the phenomenal value that the Bixby offers. Explain how the library is funded and then, oops, and the third point, how Virgens can help the Bixby Library now. First, in terms of value, the Bixby offers children the opportunity to learn and be entertained. We have a strong partnership with the schools and our children's librarian, Rachel Plant, regularly visits the schools and preschools in our five towns. Forty-nine percent of children in Addison County come to preschool, to kindergarten, not ready to learn. The Bixby plays an important role in reducing that number by promoting literacy. The cost to taxpayers is so much higher when kids come to school unprepared. The Bixby brings together parents and children and it's the first place that children really come to learn. All right, I don't know why that did that. Sorry about that. The Bixby does provide unique opportunities for adults to learn as well and it also serves outside groups who come in and use the meeting room for classes and such. Here's Tom Spencer training a group of volunteers to help seniors with their, preparing their taxes, their tax reports. The Bixby Library is no dinosaur. In fact, its purpose is really growing these days. Libraries are the social centers for their towns and they become even more important in serving families, helping people use technology in their daily lives and really offering items to borrow. Public libraries really play an important role in giving everyone a chance to succeed. The Bixby works hard to be fiscally responsible. By carefully expending our funds, we actually decreased our annual budget by 4% this fiscal year and it does a great deal to help itself. Thirty percent of our annual operating budget comes from donations, primarily from the annual appeal and the Bixby Ball. We send hundreds of letters to businesses and individuals as part of our appeal and we rely on volunteers in many capacities to stretch our dollars and save money. We have volunteers gardening, helping with the used book sale, actually repeat, actually completing repairs on the building and the checkout desk is staffed entirely by volunteers. We also apply for grants anytime we can. We had a grant that was a $50,000 grant that helped us add an additional exit to the library so it would increase our capacity and allow us to use the porch again for the public. We've had grants to inventory our artifacts and to do the repainting of the exterior windows. Virgens in the four towns together, combined, contribute 55% of our operating budget right now and our operating budget is $262,000. That's a per capita rate of $18.94 per person. It's less than the cost of a hardcover book. The operating budget includes wages for six employees, our utilities, programs, new books and technology. The building repairs and improvements, though, are not included in the operating budget. So you can see that we have a gap of 15% right now between the town's contributions and what we are able to achieve with our fundraising. The library's endowment serves as our savings account in the same way that families work to have a rainy day fund. We use the endowment for major repairs and improvements, but right now we have to use it for our budget gap. Currently, you are investing $1.58 a month for every person of Virgens. I'm asking you to consider increasing that to $1.83 per month. It's 25 cents a month more per person. And I also wanted to share with you right now that the four other towns that are part of the Bixby neighborhood have all approved this increase to $22 per capita. They are on a different fiscal year than Virgens, but we were so elated to have all four towns approve that increase. The result of an increase would mean that two-thirds of our budget would be coming from the towns. It's been four years since we have requested an increase from the five towns. The remaining 4% of the budget gap would be more manageable for us and we feel we could address that with increased fundraising and also smaller draws on our endowment. When the Bixby conducted a survey of residents last summer, what we heard people be excited about was having an opportunity to learn something new at the library, whether it's a new hobby and they wanted to improve space for kids and the idea of a Wi-Fi cafe really was exciting for people. And it's all, those things are all doable for the Bixby. A new strategic plan is right now transforming the library. We just adopted it in February. It's truly an exciting time for us at the library. We have commitment, motivation and we have direction to be there for the community. So I'm asking you if you would consider making that commitment now on behalf of Virgens to the library. So, thank you for your time and I'm glad to answer any questions that you have. I also, oh, okay, you're smiling. I have something to pass out to you, some of the basic information that I've just given. Joan, is it okay if I do that?
Sure, sure.
I'll put some this way.
Perhaps that will, perhaps that will answer my question, I don't know, but I don't have the budget in front of me, so I don't recall what the total amount that the, that Virgens contributes is annually.
It's, um, it's $43,965 and in addition, the in-kind contribution for Virgens for doing the plowing and the lawn mowing and such is part of the whole contribution that Virgens makes. So the increase, if it were to go to $22 per capita, would put it at $56,936 minus the $5,000 in-kind contribution that Public Works gives the library. So that the increase would actually go to $51,936.
In total?
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much for your time and I'm just going to fiddle with things a little bit to get out of your way here, so, thank you.
No problem. Thank you. Is there any other discussion that the council wants to have at this point or we're gonna take this up at budget? Mark the budget? Okay, all right, thank you. Next on our agenda is Christopher and Sandy Reck, Virgens Farmers Market.
Wow, I feel humbled after that presentation. Well, thank you for having me and I know you jammed us in the last minute because things are moving rapidly for us and I appreciate it. First of all, Sandy has handouts, which of course aren't quite enough, but somebody can share. Can share and what's in there are some, the new identity for the market, some ideas for some of our advertising. We'll share. The letter that I wrote to Mel, which really is a case study of why I'm here tonight and we'll jump right in. So just a little bit of background on how I got into this place, you know, how it is, you open your mouth, show a little initiative, you're in trouble. Well, that's what happened to me and, you know, last summer Sandy and I wanted to do, wanted to create a hobby, made something with my hands and also really wanted to get to know people. I've lived in town for 15 years, really didn't know that many people because I commute to Burlington every day. So, came up with the idea of making pies. It was pretty successful. Sold out every time, made a lot of friends and found out that when you make pies, you're cool, so that finally happened. So because of that success, I met Dorothy, who runs the cafe at Kennedy Brothers and she said, "Please come and create a farmer's market this winter." I said, "Okay, sounds great." Again, saying yes to that meant I was running it and so I gave that a shot and immediately started calling people who were involved in the summer one. And it was extremely successful. It was indoors, so it's much smaller space, but we had approximately 12 vendors, 100 customers during the day at any time and it was so successful that Kennedy Brothers opened their cafe on Saturday and that's something that they had never done before. So, it was creating commerce, excitement, very typical comment from people was, "I am so happy to be in this building. I haven't been in this building since I was a kid and I love being here." So after that, I was approached by the board, actually I was approached by the board much earlier than that, but I, I deferred, but they were three great women who-
persistent.
Yeah. Who volunteered for a very long time to run the market and I'm sure everybody here understands what volunteerism is and how difficult it is and, and to do it for a really long time, it's really challenging and it was time for a change. So I agreed to take on the summer market too. With that, I did some non-official surveying, I got a lot of advice, talked to vendors as well as customers about the whole idea of moving the market to Kennedy Brothers and I'll get into the reasons why in a second. But all in all, it was something that I, Sandy and I decided that we would take on. So, why move it to Kennedy Brothers? I know that, you know, if you look at cities and towns with downtown squares, you think, wow, that's, that's where you have farmer's markets, right? And it does seem like it would be the perfect place. There are some issues however and number one, regardless of what those issues were, many of the vendors were struggling. That partly was because it needed new energy and direction as far as management, things, tactical things like advertising and everything's changing with that, but that's something I can help with because I own a marketing firm in Burlington. Parking is a big issue and the most common complaint from people coming or missing it, hearing from them later is, "I couldn't find a place to park." So that was a true issue. Another serious issue was the lack of public restrooms. Traffic getting across the road, we all know traffic and certainly being there on the market for three hours, the amount of trucks, I mean, we all know that so well. And visibility, at least under the, how it was managed before, visibility is a challenge Lastly, two things more actually is, is when it rained, it was out. There was no place to go if it rained. And another issue that we had to take on was the idea that if we were gonna take this on, we had to make some changes and create more value for the vendor. So, that means things like doing things that are critical to operations that were never done before, such as having insurance. Not only will the market be insured, but the directors and the board will be insured, really critical when they're selling food. There's gonna be proper advertising, which has lacked over the last few years and one of the important things that we learned from managing the winter market was the importance of, which doesn't really have to do with the location, but we are gonna be having live music every market. Some of the other things that have occurred that I've touched on a little bit, I think, is, is how the market, being there, is assisting other businesses. First of all, I think if you talk to Bob and Lillian, they're head over heels about having the market in their, or near their facility. That brings a lot of awareness to it. Kennedy Brother's building has a lot of cachet and we can use that to promote the north side of the city. I was at some of the meetings where we talked about the new city plan and there was a lot of discussion about energizing the north side of the city and we took that seriously as part of the reason why we would like to move the market there. I mentioned that the cafe was open during the winter, so there were people making a living doing that and they were selling a lot of things. Shaksberry Cider is gonna be opening. We've had meetings with them about doing coordinated events. Nothing's in writing yet, but he's very excited about that. Hopefully he's talked to you guys, if not, he will be soon, about what his plans are and how he's gonna drive business to his business. Its proximity to DR and Country Home Products allows us to create relationships with them and, and ways to drive more business to the market. Really what I'm here for is certainly would like to answer any questions and get the blessing of the council as far as what our plans are, but one of the issues is, is that I need permission to use the parking lots and maybe part of the city grass to set up. We don't know what the best setup is going to be or where until we get all of the applications back from all the vendors. I anticipate between 20 and 30 vendors, which is gonna be pretty large, bigger than it was in the, in the green. And so I need some flexibility about where we can go to make sure that things are safe and I know that that is town or city-owned land, including the parking lot and it may even be a right-of-way or some sort of egress, I'm not sure, but. And lastly, I need permission for temporary signage. So what that means is Wednesday night, we would put up flags and banners, Thursday night, we would take them down. So, in a nutshell, that's, you know, it's been a really quick learning curve for us. We agreed to do it and all of a sudden we found out all of the administrative work that was required, including being here, so please, please have pity, but shoot anything in my way and let me know what your concerns and thoughts are.
Before we go to questions, I'm gonna have Mel describe what they'll need from the city.
I'll try to, Mike.
I know.
So, one of the things, we have a, obviously we have zoning, all right, and so if, if this was a permanent use, it would go through the Development Review Board to have this be a part of Kennedy Brothers' permit for this type of, because any use over there, all of the uses within Kennedy Brothers have gone through the Development Review Board. So, Shaksberry cider space, the office space that was, was once manufacturing, there was a time when it was Kennedy Brothers Marketplace, it was all retail, so Bob Ferenstein has gone to a number of DRB meetings to establish certain uses within the building. And certainly the parking that is both out in front and there is some, I'll call it underdeveloped parking in the rear, there's a lot of gravel out back that is suitable for some parking, but it's, it's kind of overflow parking. So to, to, this proposal of having the farmer's market over there really is a change of use of property and if it was going to be done on a regular basis, then Kennedy Brothers would need to go through the Development Review Board and obtain a permit. Obviously, that's something that Bob and Chris want to do this season and the alternative to going through the DRB is to handle this through our public assemblage ordinance. And, I mean, typically when somebody applies for a public assemblage, it's like Memorial Day Parade or the Champlain Valley Swim Meet, you know, some very one-time, one-time-a-year specific events. So, in this here, this is about a public assemblage permit application for multiple Saturdays or multiple whatever. And that's the way that, that because it's not permitted, for instance, like at the high school, they have soccer games, baseball games, those types of things, that property is permitted for events, they don't need public assemblage permits. The parish hall, they don't need public assembl- so, so anything that is, that is a pre-existing use for those type of assemblages, no DRB, the DRB has granted that and the public assemblage ordinance doesn't apply. In this instance, it does apply. So one of the things that, you know, my communications have been that I need information to determine really what class of public assemblage permit this is, i.e. first, second or third, because I have the authority to grant some of them, others have to come before the board. So that's one of the things and I'm, I'm still just, I don't have an application for one, but that is what they're going to need and I'm gonna need information about the scale of, the scale of this to be able to act on it and determine really which class, which class it is. So that's, that's that part. Also, Chris made reference to the parking lot and I really think that, just to correct him, half of the parking lot is on Kennedy Brothers' property and half of the parking lot is a part of a license agreement that the city council authorized to Kennedy Brothers. So one of the things that I need to do is to pull that license agreement out and find out specifically what, what the city conveyed, if you will, in the form of a license to Kennedy Brothers for use. And it may be that, that license allows them to do whatever they want to do with that, with that land, all right? But I just want to make sure that, you know, that there isn't any violation of that license because if, if this is not provided for in there, then the city council would be involved in, in modifying that license. So that, so that's that part. So this scenario may not come back and see you, I just want to let you know that. It may, I may, based on an application and more understanding of what is going on, it's something that I have the, I may have the authority to issue within our public assemblage, so it may, may not come back to you. Relative to signage, we do regulate signage. I'm the sign cop and, and I will flush out what you're allowed to do relative to promotional type banners. We, we do regulate them and I just need to, either, I'm gonna have to spend some time taking a look at and letting you know what you need to do. In the meantime, it would be helpful for you to be more specific about what you want to do.
I can easily get that.
And I'll, I'll figure that out, so.
Based on all that information, does anybody have any questions?
Thanks for coming by, guys, appreciate it.
Where are you gonna put everybody? I guess I'm thinking about the size and scope of the current city green and it can be well occupied on a good day by both vendors and participants. Are we talking about the green space between 22A and the driveway of Kennedy Brothers? Is that the, the use intention?
Well, it concerns me to use too much of that because of the road. You don't want children running into things now. If we ended up using that, we, we are happy to put up a divider fence and things like that. The, one of the things we don't know exactly is exactly where on the parking lot it's gonna work, so we want to experiment a little bit, but the idea was that it would be at the north end of the parking garage, parking lot, near Shaksberry so that we can integrate things and it would possibly be a circle of tents of approximately 20 tents, 10-foot tents, so there would be-
100 feet.
Fifty, yeah, 100 feet this way, 100 feet this way. That would fit on the north side of the parking lot, over towards the grass. That's the idea. I had a plot plan that Joan nicely sent me, but I couldn't figure out exactly what I was looking at, so I was gonna draw it down, but it didn't work that well. But, I'm certainly willing to do scale drawings or anything like that's required, but that's the idea. We anticipate that we can have more vendors than the summer market. You know, I think that there was generally 15 or so maximum and it severely decreased towards the end of the season, so we've already had people committed that want to do it. In fact, people from other farmer's markets that were just really jazzed to be part of ours, so.
Right, just to interject, we had a couple of folks from Middlebury, usually do the Middlebury Market, want to do our market because of what we've created in the winter time and also we've, through the current Facebook page that we have for the winter market, have received probably at least half a dozen inquiries of-
Just in the last week.
Right, new farmers that did not participate previously in the summer market, of a variety of different things, a lot of different meat products and, you know, all of that. And all farmers, not just crafters and things like that, so.
Just a little side note, I don't think we saw it on the news lately, but the Middlebury Farmer's Market is moving away from the Falls and going to the VFW parking lot, so, right, that may be some of the- So, right, that may be some of the.
Yeah, long story, but, you know, one of the things also in our nonofficial research we did is we've learned that small farmer's markets have challenges. It's difficult to keep them going. It's difficult in any situation like that where volunteerism is required to run them. This takes a lot of time. And, you know, you have to, you have to bring skills that you donate to the party. Luckily, I understand marketing. Marketing is key to making this work. And this marketing is going to be an asset to the city as well. And we can tune this market in whatever way we want. We plan to have something, what we're calling Farmer's Market Plus. And that plus isn't necessarily tangible, but it's more than just going there and buying lettuce and leaving. There's gonna be things for kids. There's gonna be live music, that we said. There's gonna be a vibe that we want to connect that people already perceive about this city. I work in Burlington, I know what people say about this city. They love it, they think it's cool. We want that vibe there, and Kennedy Brothers, I think, helps that vibe. I know that there's probably gonna be some people who are not happy that it moves from the green, and I understand that. But there are some compelling reasons why moving it really makes a lot of sense. Just the visibility alone is gonna draw people in.
And as we said earlier, the parking is kind of a detriment to us in a way because a lot of the vendors get there, they set up, and they park right around the park, or there's.
Or they have to go far away.
Yeah, so it's really been a juggling act. One other thing that we wanted to inquire about was that we understood that there was going to be a sidewalk put in at some point in that front section, a continuing area of that sidewalk. Can you tell us any more information about that?
Sure, I can tell you that it will not be done in 2017. I can tell you that.
Never mind.
Okay, so, that's what we were concerned about, is if we're gonna have to maneuver around dump trucks.
Sidewalk, number one, this is a federal grant, federal money, paperwork this thick to be able to, for the procurement of that. Number two, we're actually also waiting for Vermont gas. What we don't want to do is go building sidewalks in and then ripping them up for that. So, so let me just tell you, there, nothing will happen over there in 2017.
There's also the issue of it being a little bit further away from downtown. We're working on ways to actually help people get from downtown, the boat area, and the bus stop and bringing them there. More to come on that, hopefully, if everything goes well, but another creative thing. We have lots of ideas, lots of energy, lots of things that this needs, and in our opinion, moving it there is the move that's really gonna make it come together, so.
Questions?
From Mel, did we have to deal with any permitting just for the winter?
It was all done inside, so, yeah, that's not, that's okay.
Would it, you were talking about the possible permitting and the development board. Would it make sense to, either through us or through you, do permitting for 2017? See if it all works, and then go official through development if this is gonna be more of a ongoing?
Well, one of the, one of the things is that I need to flush out is this license agreement, because I, I, you know, this is, I have not seen a map. I, I don't know where they plan on setting up these tents. I have no, I'm working with no information, alright? So I, I don't know whether or not they're out there in the licensed premises or whether or not they're on the green space between the parking lot and the, and the building, alright? And there's a difference about whether it's considered a vendor's license because it's on city property or it's all on private property. So one of the things that I see here, this is really a co-application with, with Kennedy Brothers, alright? So you, you and he need to work together with this because unless you have a lease of some space over there, for, you know, Kennedy Brothers owns the space, alright? So, and I know, I was, I was on vacation when you stopped and see Joan, you know, I. Uh, thanks, yeah. Well, some of that was Sunday. So anyway, you, we can certainly supply you with rock-solid maps, alright? From our, from our zoning files, because I think that's really what you need. Because the way that I see this is you're gonna have a, you have to have a defined area with a certain number of vendors, so that we, so that I can calculate, attempt to calculate the, the parking demand for your vendors and for your, for, and attempt to determine your, your, the number of parking spaces that you need for your customers, alright? But what's critical here is that Bob Ferenstein needs to be the applicant here, alright? I mean, really, it's, it's his, it's his property, all the rest of tenants are, are his.
I will say that we moved time an hour later so that, and per, per Bob, oh, perfect, that's when everybody leaves here, so there's plenty of space. So we, we're dealing with those kind of things, too. And there was question why it was three to six before when nobody could get there at three and nobody could get there by six. So we made it later so that everybody can get there and work around dinner and work, so.
Excellent. Any other questions from the council? If not, thank you very much for coming in.
Thanks for having us, really appreciate it.
Okay, item number three, approval of minutes of the City Council meeting, March 28, 2017.
Motion for the minutes?
Lowell's motion, second.
Second.
Rennie's seconds. Any errors, corrections, or omissions? Don't tell me, come on! I had one I was gonna bring up, but, you know, I'll, I'll be quiet. It'll all come out in the wash. Okay, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, so carry? And are there any questions or discussion about the warrants?
Linda, the warrants?
No, she's gotta get back.
No. That's okay, so we'll just get that back.
No.
So I will tell you that there was probably half a dozen other bills that got loaded in the system since the, I've sent you a copy of the warrant, i.e., the Green Mountain Power Bill was one, ten thousand dollar, our normal bill, I don't think was in your original warrant. It was really just some, some small items that came in in between. And we've kind of learned that the, we don't get first-class mail, I don't think anybody else is experiencing this, but we don't get first-class mail on Tuesdays any longer. And I don't know if it's just us or the world, we, we need to talk to the post office, because when we go to the post office on Tuesday, we get some junk mail, we don't get money, we don't get bills, we don't, so, anyway, just, and, and it's not like two Tuesdays in a row. It's like, so, anyway. So, 'cause one of the things, we really, you know, obviously, we pay our bills, alright? And, and so I like to pay every bill that I have my hands on, the, right up until the end of our working day on Tuesday, and no bills came in the mail today, nor did any money come in the mail today either. Actually, you did give, did you give, you didn't get nothing, yeah, it's terrible.
If there's, there's no questions or discussion, well, everybody signed that? Okay, we're gonna move on. Next one, I, I think I have to preface a little statement here, because we allow citizens' comments, but due to open-meeting laws, we cannot respond or take action on them. We can hear what you have to offer, and if it requires an agenda item, we can bring it on the next or the following council meeting. So, having said that, had clarity there, and, Mel, tell me if I'm wrong.
You got it.
Okay, anybody have any comments that they'd like to make? Mr. Bob?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions, one for City Manager, one for our mayor. Should I wait until you get to the manager's report?
If there's an item on the agenda, if it's an item already on the agenda, we can take those questions at that time, Bob. What is the subject matter?
Well, you alluded to it a minute or two ago when you referenced a federal grant for the sidewalk.
Yeah.
I had a couple of questions for the mayor. Is this an appropriate time to ask?
I'm, I'm probably gonna defer to Mel, because I'm fairly new to the.
Maybe not, 'cause you're the mayor and he isn't.
Okay.
Question is, first question was, how much in city, how much in federal grants does the city currently hold? I mean, do you have, you've applied for federal grants, you've got federal dollars for various and some projects, just the sidewalk is one of them.
Okay, so the side, so, let me answer that question.
Please do, 'cause I don't have that number.
Yeah, so we, we probably have, probably have ten grants going on at the, at the same time, okay? Just so you know. And so the sidewalk extension project, that was through V Trans, but it's backed by federal dollars. We, we got that grant, I'm gonna say sometime, we applied for it in 2015, we actually got the grant agreement in 2016, and it has a, the, the federal award is two-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand and some change. The local share is thirty thousand dollars or thereabouts, which was previously authorized by the City Council to come from the Water Tower Fund. So those, that was the commitment, there's a, there was a ten percent local share, alright? So that we have a grant agreement with V Trans, and we know that it is federally-backed dollars. We have a number of payroll grants and equipment grants that are police-related. Some, some are backfilled, they all come through the, they all come back, come through the state of Vermont, but there may be federal dollars behind them. We received a bulletproof vest grant from the Office of, OJP Office, no, it's O Justice. Justice, OJP, and that grant is three-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars or three-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. And that is a, that's a federal grant, and we've bought the vest, and tomorrow, I'm gonna be putting in my application for that money. I'd say that's it, that's, you know, that's rough.
Without the grants, the taxpayers in Virginia would be liable for those expenditures? Is that a correct statement on my part? Without the grants?
Well, I can tell you that if we didn't get the three-hundred-thousand-dollar grant, my guess is we probably wouldn't do the project.
Okay, then either the project's canceled or the funds are derived from some other.
Yeah, it's very.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
The reason I bring it up is, and it's in the news ad nauseam, sanctuary cities, and that's why I'm talking to the mayor. What's your draw, what's your take on sanctuary city issue? Because that, according to Sessions, he'll pull federal grants if the cities, he feels, don't support.
What I'm about to say is my. What my feelings are, it has nothing to do with what the council may feel.
Understand, that's why I asked you.
Okay, I want to make that very clear, because I have not talked to any of them about this. I have chock-talked to the chief of police, and I totally agree with his philosophy. Don't, if you don't look, they don't break the law, you don't bother them. But he is bound by law, if they break the law, he has to take and ask those questions of the other individuals that may be accompanying that individual. They're not looking, they're not going out there and looking for problems. I, I can, I know from past experience in the fire service that we have had some situations where there's been some people, not from the United States, that have had auto accidents. And you have to take, number one, see that they get medical treatment, but you also have to make sure that the police department can do their job. They don't go out of their way, Bob.
That's the bottom line.
And, and that's, that's the philosophy George wants to take and have, because of the other issues on the other end of, you, you could lose funding. So let the governor choose what he wants to do. I, I just, myself cannot support that right now.
That's why I asked you the question, 'cause you're the mayor and you carry weight in the city like, like Mira Weinberger and the folks down in Rowland, Countomon, you know.
Well, thank you for that, but I'm not sure that that's all true, but thank you.
Well, you would be the one to petition for that status.
If necessary, I, I, I'm sure that the chief and I will be standing side by side. The chief and I have already talked, he reports to Mel, okay? And I don't sort of vet Mel with Mel's assignment, I just want to know what George's philosophies are. And if I don't agree with what he, the direction he is having, at least I have an avenue to go to Mel, talk about it, and then we can open up for discussion, but.
We have discussions, roundabout discussions with our PD, and have come to the same conclusions, and we're comfortable with them, for all the reasons you've mentioned and others. There are many levels to this whole thing, but that's why I needed to kind of get your take on it. And you, I got a question for Mel a little bit later, if you wanted to wait until it's.
No, if, if, if it's not an item on the agenda, we should address it now. But we can't discuss, you know, I mean, we can give you information, I guess.
This is easy stuff.
Sure.
Looking at your, I'm throwing you the softballs, Mel. This came out of your latest business report, city report. Looking at the delinquent sewer taxes, excuse me, property taxes that went from, going from 2013, 14, 15, went from forty-eight to fifty-one to twenty-five K. How did they go from fifty-one to twenty-five K in that one year? You, you put forth some extraordinary effort to collect more than fifty percent?
Well, I'm not sure what your, what your, I'm not sure, so you're, you're comparing FY 2015 against FY 2016?
I'm just kind of reading the numbers off of your annual reports.
Okay.
That, I mean, that's, that's great, that's commendable. I don't, just kind of curious how you were able to execute a fifty percent recovery on delinquent property taxes in that one year or two years?
Can I think of stat?
Sure.
A wild guess might be having to do with something with property sales, depending on when the, he goes to try to collect some of the taxes. And one of the things Mel always has tried to do in the past is to make sure that when we do budget, we have a ballpark figure that we know what we're gonna end up with. And he knows the circumstances of why the property tax isn't being paid. So we know that when there's some given, some taken, may recoup, and we do have until August, what, was it, is the date, two?
Yeah.
The, the books really don't close July, or June first, July first. It's, it's, we got a little extension if we can coop that money in that timeframe.
Let me tell you, I'll do a little quick accounting for you, because I wish, I wish the number was zero, frankly, we really wish that, you know, when Joan sends out a thousand bills, it'd be really good if everybody paid every bill, and we wouldn't have to mail a delinquent notice, that'd be handy, alright? We, we wouldn't even be able to. But I will tell you that from a cash flow and accounting basis, we are on what's called the modified accrual basis of accounting, and what that means as it pertains to delinquent taxes is that we are allowed to count delinquent tax collections that occur within the first sixty days of our fiscal year, as if we had them on, on the, at the end of the year, okay? So let's say on June 30th, let's say we had eighty thousand dollars worth of delinquents, and we were able to collect, we were able to collect thirty thousand of that eighty, sixty days in, alright? We're able to count that, that thirty thousand dollars. So I will tell you that the number was twenty-two thousand dollars, that's what you read there. It's a very low number.
Fifty to twenty-two.
Cause I'll tell you, I'll tell you the reality is, is that, is that, yeah, delinquents matter, but when they really matter is where you're at 60 days into your fiscal year. So at the 50 days into your new fiscal year. So we send out delinquent notices, and we send out nice letters, and then the letters aren't quite so nice, and they get, and they kinda go downhill from there relative to, I'm not a guy to not, if I get you a letter about delinquent taxes, you'd be wise to communicate with me, alright? You know, just how, that's how it works, alright? And so we drive that number really low, because if 60 days into your year, you go from 50,000 to 20,000, it's like found money. I mean, really, it put position, it puts $30,000 in our fund balance, alright? The, the problem is, is when the 20 goes to 50, because the reverse occurs. And so I don't wanna say, you know, I'm not gonna sit here and say, man, our delinquents are too low, I would never say that. But it's, it's something that Vergens has for years, you know, not tolerated. You go to a bunch of other towns and take a look at their delinquents, it's scary, really, it's big numbers, big time number of years, and you're really not doing anybody any favor. So we're, we're fairly aggressive, but we will work out payment, reasonable payments plans with any, with anybody. So we work, we work with people, so we, we, we are diligent about our efforts.
Looking at what you've done, you, the city, has done with delinquent sewer taxes. I mean, some of them, some of them are astronomical, but there are probably 80% with the double asterisk saying.
Partial payment, yeah.
Partial payment, and lots of single asterisks, which are great. But there are some, some four, five, six years worth of, you know, people haven't paid for, if you divide 300, the number, outstanding number by 365, it's about a buck a day for sewer. I mean, not, looking at some serious years passing here, three, four, five years. What is the penalty besides the 8% and making that number bigger and bigger and bigger?
Tax sale, you go through the same process for unpaid sewer as you can for tech, delinquent taxes, and that's really, yeah, and that's really what we do. I, I, I'm not gonna, you know, the numbers are published in the book, so if you see somebody that owes a thousand dollars, if they own a single-family house and they owe a thousand dollars, that's three years' worth of sewer, alright? And I can tell you by the time you read that book, it's three and a half, okay? So, and I can tell you, I, I, I can tell you that anybody that owes the city $3,000, excuse me, a thousand dollars in delinquent sewers, they're in trouble, just so you know. Anybody out there watching that owes the city a thousand dollars, their, 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 their next letter they get won't be that pleasant.
So, yeah, there are, there are four.
More than a handful.
Four or five that are well in excess of two years.
I'm sure, yeah.
And now you can just answer my question?
Yeah.
Those also are subject to property sale?
Absolutely.
Just like delinquent property taxes?
Correct.
Did not know that.
Absolutely.
Good, thank you both.
Take care of your questions. Any other comments from citizens not on the agenda? Cheryl?
Uh, really brief, I just wanted to let you know that I work in Colchester. And I apologize for not getting here sooner, but I was one of the few people that had emailed Mike to let him know that 5:30 is a tough haul for me, and I will not be able to get here by 5:30. So, as part of the planning commission, I know that there are things coming up like public hearings. And traditionally, I don't know how the city council does, I don't remember, but traditionally, some public hearings happen at the beginning of the meetings. That's the way it will be at the, one of our planning commission meetings, we'll have a public hearing at the beginning of the meeting, and then proceed to the rest of the business meeting. And that's how other boards operate that I've been on, that the beginning of their meeting is often their public comment period or public hearing, if they're having one. So I just wanted to make that request, I don't know how doing a public hearing in the middle of your business meeting is gonna really flow, but I just would appreciate if there's gonna be something that maybe a public hearing, especially for the planning commission, where it would be great to actually be here to hear those comments, if you could be sensitive to timing. It's not up to me to say any times, but I just wanted to put my two cents in, I love to come to council meetings, but it's often a little bit of a struggle to get here from working, and I just wanted to let you know, thanks for listening.
Thank you, Cheryl. We'll go to item number five. And we'll, Vergens Elementary School, we have Jen, I believe.
No, Erin.
Erin, Erin's here?
Didn't know this young lady here, I didn't point out.
Oh, that's Shannon.
That's Shannon, oh, okay.
She's coming up.
Okay, so I am Erin Roach, and I'm here to represent the Vergens Union Elementary School Community Group. We are a group that supports the school, we're made up of parents and teachers and administrators and any other community member that wants to participate. And we do a couple of different things, one thing that we do is fundraise for a variety of school items and activities that might not normally fall into the school budget, usually they have to do with arts education, like artist in residence programs or playground equipment, those sorts of kind of big ticket, ticket things. As part of that, we do a couple of different events. Each year, it's been kind of every other year, and I think they're trying to make it every year, there's a read-a-thon in the fall, and in the spring, there is a talent show. And last year, I think 15 different acts, elementary school acts got up on the stage at the high school and performed before basically a sold-out audience, a full house. And, and that activity raised several thousand dollars for the school. We're doing that talent show again on May 20th, we're very excited. One of the ways we, we raise money through this in a couple of different ways, through program, ad sponsors, as well as we have a raffle of a variety of prizes, this is a very long lead-in to, one of the items we would really like to feature in the, one of the raffle packages, there'll be four packages, and one of them will be really focused on sort of family fun entertainment. We would like to include a family pass to the Vergens pool as part of the prize that a family could win if they buy the raffle tickets, and the raffle tickets are $5 each. And one of the reasons I, and this is kind of important to me, is that I feel like it's a great way to promote activities that are really family-friendly and in-town, it's a city resource, and also because it really promotes active outdoor fun and for, for families. So I would like to see this as a prize, and I think it would be popular among the people that will be participating in the raffle. And I also think that, other than some possible forgone revenue, it doesn't really cost the city anything to offer this as a, as a donation, because unless the people who win it were planning to buy a pass, then, then it wouldn't be revenue the city would see anyway. So that's what I wanted to ask for, is like you to agree to, I guess, let us have a donation of a family pool pass for our raffle fundraiser.
Okay, we could open it up for questions from the council?
I know that we give a donation of a full family pass.
We have a motion, and, did you second it? And Rennie seconded it? Okay. Any other questions? Bob?
How much is a family pool pass for a year?
That's later in the, that's.
He just wanted the current rate.
Current rate?
Current rate, Vergens resident, a hundred dollars, non-Vergens resident for family is, I believe, 130.
That's a bargain.
Any other discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried? We're going to go to vendor, seeing how, this young lady is here.
Yeah, we'll go with her.
We'll go with her, then we'll do Rick next. Okay. This has to do with the truck?
Taco Truck All-Stars for an event I'm sponsoring this Saturday. The taco truck will come down from Burlington and park either in front of the Opera House or on Park Street alongside, depending on weather and parking availability, starting at 10 and going till about 3 o'clock in the afternoon. Basically gives another option for people attending the event to have food, since Three Squares usually gets overwhelmed with lunch service, especially for families that come in, we're expecting a huge turnout for the event, and we wanna have food options for them in town. And there's not a lot of lunch options right now, laundry's closed, Park Square's is closed, it's basically the hired hand, and Three Square is the only options for families to get something to eat.
And what, which one of these is this?
It's a new one, this will be added.
Sorry.
Any questions? Discussion, Mel, you wanna?
Yeah, one thing, Lynette, a couple of meetings ago, or maybe the last meeting, you wanted the, the city council to, make it a priority to look at her vendor's license, and I just wanna let you know that I have spent just a little bit of time looking into this. And when I say a little bit of time, I simply went to the Town of Middlebury's website, because I wanted to see how the Town of Middlebury was handling vendors. So that's exhaustive of a research that I did. But what, what they do and what appears, and I haven't talked to Kathleen, but what it appears, based on my reading of their vendor's license, is, is that it is very specifically tied to their public assemblage permits. So that's my take on it. So let's say that somebody, if somebody wanted to set up a hot dog cart, not tied into with any event, just wanna set up a hot dog cart next to the park, they, and I, I shouldn't speak for Middlebury, but it appears based on my reading of the ordinance, that they wouldn't allow that vendor, alright? Because you can only be a vendor with a public assemblage. So that, for instance, if, if the farmer's market had a public assemblage permit, and there was a provision in there for them to have, to have a vendor, that would be a part of their public assemblage. This is an event at the Opera House, alright? Now, the Opera House is a facility that doesn't need a vend, doesn't need a public assemblage permit, but I think it's because what's, it's happening inside of the Opera House. This here, you know, if, if our vendor's license was tied to a public assemblage permit, then in this instance, they would, you know, the Opera House would need a public assemblage permit, because they're actually doing something outside of their, of their four walls. So I just wanna throw that out to you, because I, I, I think I have some understanding of your concerns, of your concerns, and I'm just telling you, that's how Middlebury attempted to limit to some degree vendors.
Well, I certainly don't want it stopping from happening, that would benefit the Opera House. But as I've expressed before, and I'll express it again, is, my concern is, we have restaurants, good restaurants, very good restaurants. We have more than, we have the Black Sheep, we have the Anecdote, we have Hired Hand, we have Three Squares that are all open during.
This is for lunch, this is not for dinner, this is a.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
So it's 10:00 in the morning until 3:00 in the afternoon. It's a family show benefiting the Boys and Girls Club of Vergens and the Evergreen Preschool. And it's bringing people from all different communities outside of Vergens, I would love it if they could eat at all of the restaurants in town, but there's only two restaurants that are open during those hours. And the capacity is 300, we're hoping to sell out, and I would hate for Matt to be overwhelmed, or Ian to be overwhelmed with the amount of people that could come in from that wanting, especially hungry children, you know? They, they're not patient when it comes to getting a hot dog or something, so.
That's my only concern, only because they're tax-paying restaurants, lunch, you're right, I didn't, I, I should, I knew you said 10 to 3.
I did ask Three Squares if they would do the event first, with having a table set up inside, and they said no, because they were overwhelmed, because it's restaurant week, and they are catering another event during that day, they are catering the open house at the Boys and Girls Club that morning, this is a sort of a play-all-day event for Vergens, showing off everything that we have in this town. The taco truck, Adam's great, he has great quality food, he does lots of events all over, you know, this area and this county and around Burlington. And so I, I went for something quality, that would be quick and fun, and, you know, who doesn't love a taco, so. I think it'll be a good fit.
Do you need a motion?
The vendor's license?
To approve, do I have a?
I'll second it.
We have a motion, we have needed a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I just made the motion.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Alright.
Just need to second.
Second.
Motion, Rennie, seconded by Lowell, sorry about that. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now we'll go to the taxi license. I see Rick is not here to answer any questions, should we have any of him? We have all the information we need, as far as insurance, looking through this one more time.
He has a valid operator's license, he has insurance.
Other than that, we.
And it takes city council authorization in accordance with our ordinance.
Okay, and ask for motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
And Rennie seconded it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Okay, the next item, item C, the Seth Warner, the DAR bench honoring Vietnam vets. This is more of an informational to start with, and then I'll need some action on the council. Originally, you were told that it was going to go on the city green, it is presently set up on the park by my brothers.
Which is what they want.
Which, which is what they want, the people that donated the bench. So I think this was done in January, so I'm, I'm just looking for everybody's approval to say, no problem, no harm, no foul, it's, it's fine down at the city dock.
McDonough Park.
McDonough Park, yeah. So, don't know.
Just trying to clean, to make it clean, because the city council, they requested in the city council specifically authorize that bench to go in the park. And we just don't, you know, we just think that, you know, out of, out of respect to the city council, you know, the city council shouldn't go down and see this bench in the wrong park.
So we just want.
Unless there's an objection, or we, I think there should be a motion, so the record's clear.
Let's apply the motion.
Authorizing that bench to be located at McDonough Park.
I'll make that motion.
Lowell made a motion, and Matt seconded it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay. Fire station floor, does anybody feel the need, they have to go up and look at that? You did. Okay. Mel?
So, it isn't very often that I come to the city council requesting that you overspend a line item by a huge number, alright? And I certainly wouldn't do it unless I felt comfortable with it. The, if, I know we're gonna do a budget report a little bit later, but I wanna, we really do need to do something with this floor. And I really much prefer just doing the floor, as opposed to doing half of a floor. It's just the way I, you know, I don't wanna say that I'd go in debt to do it this way, but I, if we can afford to do the whole floor, we should do the whole floor, so.
Before you go too far, Mel, I feel the need that I need to disclose.
Yeah.
Number one, everybody knows I'm a fireman, that's not what I'm disclosing, and the fact that they got the resource, the contractor, from me. I worked with a gentleman that did work for the state of Vermont, and so he is, I supplied the information. And so when it comes time to vote, I will abstain.
So, if you, if you, if you look at the current fire department budget, the, the budget is $156,000, and the line item for maintenance, station maintenance and repair is $12,000. We've spent roughly $3,000 already this year in the budget. What I'm recommending that, that we authorize the. What I'm recommending that, that we authorize the, the contract with the, with-
Rick Pease.
With Rick Pease-
Pease Construction.
To do the floor at $31,000. Now, obviously, that puts, that puts that budget, $22,000 in trouble, based on my math, okay? So I will tell you that we ended the, we ended FY16 in the fire department with a fund balance of $49,259. We used $15,000 of that fund balance to reduce, if you will, or to control the shares of the four towns that participate. So like, if you, if you look above, you'll see that we collect $141,327 against a budget of $156,327. That's the $15,000 is coming out of that $49,000. Normally, normally, I might say, let's, can we, you know, we have these quotes, yeah, we can, you know, I would, if I didn't have any money, I wouldn't be doing anything with this, this need. We would wait until the next budget cycle. But I really think that it's important that we address this floor, and we really, we're talking about the same money at the end of the day. That forty, if you, if we don't do the floor, that $35,000 is just going to pass through to next fiscal year. If we do the floor, it's like spending $22,000 of the $35,000, that's what you're doing. It doesn't really change anything other than getting the floor repaired because people are available to do it now as opposed to waiting until, till the end of the year. So, there's no question about it. The result is, is that the fire department budget is going to, if we do this and they get it done and we pay the bill, the fire department budget's going to go over. But it's not going to go over sending the fire department fund into the red. That's, that's not the case.
Rennie?
Well, I'd like to put the motion on the floor to spend that money, the $31,000, with this particular contractor coming out of the fire department budget, as you have explained. So we can at least discuss it on the floor.
Second.
Okay, and then, then I'd like to say that that floor has been a problem for many, many years. That sometimes, and, and I'm a little bit ashamed that when I was manager, that we didn't fix it back then because we had a problem with it. And it's about time that we're doing something with it. Sometimes we were looking at that floor and wondering, is some, is a truck going to come through that floor one of these days or something? I mean, it's, it really needs to be done, and-
The description that I have received from the officers, it is superficial. It goes down a ways and it stops. And it's because when the floor was done and sealed, the top coat was sealed, all the moisture wasn't out of the cement, and that's what caused the spalling that's happening there now. And what he's going to do is he's going to do the whole floor, he's going to strip it all, take it, take out all the bad, and then level it back out, and then seal it properly, so.
Take it down to what, though?
Take it down to good cement. Did we have a second on Rennie's motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you think the timeframe, how long the work will take?
Well, on the, the trucks obviously would come out of here, they'd go down on the, they'd go down to the wastewater treatment plant for that period of time, you know? You think a week?
That's what the response I got.
Is it a three-day thing or a three-month thing?
No, no.
It's a week. They said they should, should be able to be in and out within a week's period.
And they would be able to start running?
He said that he, I, what I asked Jim Brewer to find out is, would they be done by June 30? And he said yes. And so that way, if, we will owe that bill against, if we don't pay the bill to July, it's really a June bill.
So, a week? Just so I can understand this. So a week would be taking the bad cement out?
Correct.
Putting the new cement down?
Well, it's, it's an epoxy.
It's an epoxy.
Yeah.
It's another new material, it's a new material.
Okay.
And then they'll top coat it with another epoxy.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, how would it cure in that time?
Yeah, yeah, it's not concrete.
Okay.
Do we need to do any type of competitive bidding, or is just having, well, just to make sure we're not doing anything we're not supposed to?
Yeah, you don't have to.
Okay, that was it.
Yeah.
If we're happy with, if you like the number, then I'm good with that, just want to make sure not, you have to have three officials.
Nope.
I move the vote.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstained. And then we go to swimming pool budget and rates. Noel, I had a conversation on this earlier today.
So, you know, both of these things do need to be done at some point, all right? We do need to have a budget and we do need to set rates. And let me just, let me just tell you that when I put this, let me, let me back up just a little bit and give you a little information about staffing, just so that you all know. Mike certainly knows this. Brad Castillo is not returning to the pool this year. He had a baby. And I met with Brad a couple of times here before, and Brad has decided that he would not be returning to work at the pool in any capacity in 2017. Met with Jennifer Kingsley, and Jennifer Kingsley has agreed to step up. She'd be, I know she'd be mad if I said this in public, but I'd do it just the same. She said her furnace is shot, needs to do furnace, and so therefore she is looking for, for, for extra work. That should go in the Addis Independent, I'm sure, Andy, anyway. So anyway, so Jennifer has historically run the lesson program, and she's been the assistant director. And so this really isn't necessarily new to her. However, she is not, she really, water quality is not her forte. And the whole pump and backflow and backwashing the system, that's not her deal. She's never been involved with that whatsoever. So I approached Rick Chapput yesterday morning in, in really a low-pressure request to him about that water quality be the responsibility of Rick Chapput for the wastewater treatment operators. Number one, they're skilled in this, in that area, and it gives us some depth. And I, I really, I really think that you can, as long as somebody's responsible for water quality, I don't think you need to be a lifeguard, I don't think you'd need to be a lifeguard to do water quality. That's my opinion. I know, Mark, you've been a director of sorts in, in your past life.
That's just because that's what you had to do.
Yeah, so-
But if there's somebody else who can, is willing to do it on a more regular basis than, you know, once a week drive down to Middlebury with a sample, that's-
So anyway, that's, I just want to let you know that if the budget, if the budget looks a little different, that's why it looks a little bit different. And it really deals with, with Jennifer's role at the pool and where her, which line items her salary comes out of. When I, you know, I, I went through the budget a couple of times, and you can tweak the numbers here or there, but I can tell you, the, the numbers that I have on the revenue side are, are based on the last two years. I mean, you can't just say we're going to collect $17,000 in daily fees when the last two years you've collected 14. I mean, it is what it is. So I'm really, you know, quite confident with our revenue, with those revenue numbers. I will tell you that we did do a little better on, on the lesson program last year because we offered an evening or supper time classes, all right? It really was well-received, and we might be able to do a little better job. If there's not the demand for all of the classes in the morning, we can cut out some of that payroll. But I don't, I don't dare to just start arbitrarily slashing numbers in a budget when in, when in reality you're, you're going to need it. So when you look at this in the bottom right-hand corner, you see red ink, okay? I mean, that's, that's my, if, if, if we don't, if we just run the pool, all right? And revenues come in as, as I've forecasted and expenses as I forecasted, we end the season, if you will, with a little bit of red ink. And so how do you, how do you cure red ink? I really don't think, sure, you could, there is a bunch of, a bunch of ways to cut red ink. You can shorten the season of the pool, that would, that would do it. We've never asked the elementary school for any money. They use the pool for the last couple of weeks of school. We've never asked them for money, that's an idea. We could raise rates, that's an idea, you know? So there's a, there's a few, yeah, there's a few options. Now, you know, we're not talking about $10,000 worth of red ink here, but it's, it's red. And, you know, you could increase the allocation from the watershed fund, all right? You know, there's $18,000 there today, I'm going to say, or roughly, I don't know if that's absolutely up to date, Joan, it'll be, we'll give you a new number in three days, right? On the first of April, you'll get another statement. So we think we've got 18,000 above-
$191.
Above the $350,000. That's what we had on, on the last day of February. When Joan gets her, gets the statement, it could be more, more or less of that. So, and I will tell you that that budget affords no capital improvements. It's not like there's a line item to replace the roof or install chemtrol systems or, you know, there's nothing, there's nothing there. You know, there's no capital expenses in that budget.
So where do we stand on the repairs that we had talked about last fall?
Well, relative to patching, you know, our, our crew will patch the pool, just like we always have. But they're, you know, they're, you know, the chemtrol, I know that, that Mike Quigley and his gentleman have been to the pool, I haven't caught up with him, I don't know, but, you know, we know what those, we know what those things cost, but, you know, so those are in the works.
Okay.
The corner between the shallow and deeper end is going to take some significant rebuilding.
Yep.
And then I think we're going to try and get some swim team, parent volunteers to help scrub the pool and try and keep the hours of the crew down so that they don't have to be doing labor that we can have other people willingly go in and do some stuff.
So I don't have any good news for you, really, sorry. Just telling you.
So, so I guess what the discussion needs to be at this point is, where do we, or how do we come up with the extra approximately two grand to make us stay in the black? Do we take it out of watershed funds? That is what that fund is for, if we need it?
I know one idea that's been floated around every once in a while is to let private parties rent out the pool facilities in an evening for events, have a pool party of some sort. And if we charged a few hundred dollars for that, you had three or four of those happen during the summer, that could offset it. But we haven't done that before, and I don't know what the-
How could you budget for that?
Right, I mean, it's been floated, but it hasn't gone anywhere, and so that would be possible.
That would be a hard one to set a dollar amount as to what you're going to-
But it would be something we could try and do this year, and it would, at least we'd have some ability to say, well, that's how it happened this year, and maybe next year we can.
So let me, let me just, you know, this, this memo here about rates, you know, the memo, really, all it did was change the date from last year. And, you know, when I say below are my recommended rates for 2017, you know, it's not like, you know, you know, it's, it's not like I'm holding on to that recommendation, I don't want it to move. But I will tell you that I, you know, I, I want to make sure that the Virgin Swimming Pool is not a pool for the rich, all right? So, and I, and I think our rates, you know, we could do a, spend a lot of time, you know, looking at what other towns, you know, charge for rates and this type of thing. You know, so yeah, you, you know, you could fill, you could backfill this if you raise the single-person rate to 55, and if you raise everything five bucks or 10 bucks or something, and it's going to generate some money. However, it may, it may actually bite you, and so you end up selling less passes and, and you might pick up more money doing daily fees. So, you know, it's, this is, you know, I don't want to say that I know everything about running, running a movie theater, you know what I mean? It's, it's not what I do, all right? But there is, there's going to be, no matter what you do, you know, there's going to be an impact, you know, I just, I think. Rennie?
Well, it seems to me that we don't have a lot of, a lot of choice, at least at this point in time, that the money, if we're going to balance it as far as the budget is concerned, is, is related to the, taking money out of the watershed fund. And perhaps we can find some new ways to bring in some additional revenue. I would say, from having experience in running municipal pools in other communities, I don't remember any of them making money. They are all subsidized. And so we ended up getting it as a municipal pool, and it wasn't before, and for all those years, they, we, the group that ran it were very lucky that they could do it and raise enough money to keep that pool running. But the reality of it is that as we go forward, it's not going to run and make enough money to run itself, that we're going to have to subsidize in some fashion, and it's starting now, so.
So we, you know, even when the city didn't own the pool- Rennie, the, the city used to allocate $6,000, you know, $6,000 a year, I think. There might have been a time when we had revenue sharing money back a long, long time ago, when I didn't have gray hair. We used to allocate some money from revenue sharing, but there's no question about it that, you know, it's, it's always been subsidized to some percentage. And of course, as the pool gets older, the, the required subsidy doesn't get smaller, it gets bigger. So, so Rennie, if I'm following you, we got to just take that, snip that Band-Aid off at some point here and do something, all right? So, you know, I mean, yeah, the quick, the quick solution is to increase the watershed fund to $11,000 and move on, you know? You know, another solution is to, the only other quick solu, if we're talking about quick solutions, you only got two quick solutions. One is, like I said, increase the allocation of watershed fund. The other quick solution that potentially could come back to bite you is to start moving these rates around. And, and, you know, like, we require every swim team member to get a pass, all right? Now, and, and you need to be careful that if we cause those, you know, so parents are having to join, pay for swim team, which is 75 bucks or 80 bucks or something like that, plus the pass, okay? There's, there's a, there's a breaking point here, so.
Is a third solution not to adopt the budget?
With a $1,700 deficit, I mean, I'm a bottom-line kind of-
That's an option, yeah.
Option number three, right?
That's an option, do nothing.
Because I'm a bottom-line kind of guy.
Yeah.
$1,700 is not going to bankrupt the city of Virgin's, right? And typically, we are very prudent physically. I'm, I'm not, something that galls me typically.
Yeah.
But I think it should be, you know, something we should, we should consider. It's not going to kill us to run a negative line item on one, on one of our departments.
For a year.
For a year. Yeah, for a year. No, 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 not, not, nauseam by any means. But, you know, could we start to poll the community and see if we can get some private parties in there and, and get a little traction on revenue, which I think there is opportunity. It does not come out of increasing passes or increasing rates. I, I think it becomes prohibitive. And I hear what you're saying, Mel, because there is a tipping point where people just stop participating because they do become more expensive, so.
Is there, this is just food for thought, is there any thought of reducing the cost of going to the pool so more families would be encouraged to go? You know, is there, and I don't know, because I don't have kids at the pool, but is there families that don't go to the pool that would like to go to the pool if it was $10 cheaper? I don't, you know, I don't know. If, you know, you, sometimes when you drop something, you get more people participating, so.
I can tell you, one of the things that we're seeing is we are seeing a drop in passes, okay? If you, if you, if you look at these, if you look at the numbers of, of where passes are going and where, I can tell you that when the swim team is on the comeback, what I can, when the swim team had 108 or 116 members in the swim team and everyone was required to get a pass, okay? The city, you know, the city benefits from that. The city, uh, you know, the city benefits from that. When those numbers got down to seventy-five or something like that, all right? That's what you're, that's what you're seeing, uh, seeing right there. So, it really, you know, it really is a, we really are in a partnership with the swim team, to be honest with you, too, 'cause the success of the swim team and their participants directly affects our, our bottom line. And so, uh, and you don't really, you don't, you know, the way that that works, just so you know how it works with the swim team, they, there's three coaches that get hired. You take their wages, you add workers' compensation and social security, and we settle up with them. If we have, if we've taken in more money in swim team registrations than it costs them with payroll related, we give them their money back. If there's not as much money, uh, then, then they have to pay us. And you can see last year, there was eleven hundred and sixteen thousand eighty-nine cents. So they make us whole. So, they make us whole relative to payroll and payroll related, but we actually benefit from passes when there is over a hundred members on their swim team.
How do we market passes?
Do people just kinda know they can come get a pass or do we-
Put 'em on our website. There's a front porch forum, I mean, you know.
We can manage to defend it when the dates are.
There is also-
But it might be helpful, they're like, get it into the newsletters of the schools and the, the student things, just to have a bigger push at the beginning of the season.
Right, so one of the things that we're waiting on, we have a, a one-page two thousand and seventeen schedule. I, that, that's what Jennifer and I, Jennifer Kingsley and I did, was put that together. When is, when is lesson sign up? You know, we don't have swim teams sign up on hours, 'cause we don't really run it, but it could go on there just as easily. All of the various lessons are on there and all I'm waiting for, we'd like to include the swim team's schedule on that so that there's just one piece of paper that has basically all of the information. There's, rates are part of this. And so, you know, even though I put two stars next to that, Mike, Mike asked me about that. It's like, yeah, I put two stars there because, you know, you don't have to make a decision tonight, but there is benefit in getting this, getting it behind ya, particularly in rates, so that we can get the word out and get the schedule out.
I'd like to offer my two cents here, guys and gals. I, I'd like to see the rates stay where they are, okay? Split your idea in the middle. Take an extra thousand out of the fund and if, try to come up with ideas to done, do some fundraising and then see where we land. That way, we'll be closer to the black than hopefully the red, and we might come out all right.
I'd agree with you with, with keeping the rates the same, because I, I think this should be a pool for all of the people. And, um, that is a way to help do that. I, I don't agree with, um, essentially voting a deficit, even though it's a small deficit. The only time that I would trail over to that side is if we had a, a concrete plan as to how we are gonna climb out of the deficit, then I, I wouldn't mind, you know, saying, okay, we're gonna carry this deficit because we're gonna do this, this, and this, and we'll be out of it by then. So, my preference would be to fund it out of the watershed fund, so it's a balanced budget. And then those things that maybe we could do to get more money, um, having private parties use it, I'm not sure what else we could do to, uh, get more revenue. Maybe we can establish some sort of an organization called Friends of the Virgin Swimming Pool, just like Friends of the Opera House and Friends at the Library, that, groups that go out there and raise money to help to do things for a facility, a facility, um, that it can't raise on its own. So, I think there's some things that we could do, but I would rather see the, it fully funded in some way as, as we're passing the budget.
If we end up being able to find extra money, can that money be funneled back into the-
It stays there.
It stays there.
The money doesn't roll.
So if we take two thousand dollars out of the watershed and it turns out we only needed five hundred of that because we found fifteen hundred dollars in other things over the summer, can we shove fifteen hundred back into the watershed so that-
You certainly can, you know, you certainly can.
Okay, so I don't-
You're thinking about trading the two thousand like a loan possibly?
Yeah. So we cut, we, we're covered up now and at the end of the season, we may find out, oh, we did find a few things that we weren't sure were gonna work, but it did work. And so now we really didn't need as much as we borrowed out of it and we can put it back and we only took three hundred dollars instead of two thousand.
Conversely, we could be looking at eleven thousand dollar subsidy next year as well.
That's right.
You know, and where's that stop?
Well, I think Rennie has got it right. This is sort of a loss leader. You're, you're building the community-
But we're already-
Be losing money on this aspect, hopefully by bringing in business and families and stuff that will increase it in someplace else. On this line item, we're losing, but someplace else, we're gaining.
We have to come up with another way to market the pool.
And like Rennie said, there's ways to, to do that. It's just how we go about it.
So I, I guess we'd need a couple of motions in order to get this going here. First, I'll make a motion to, um, adopt the, um, the fee schedule as presented by the city manager.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Any other discussion?
Yes.
Lynn?
And I'll, you know, just put him probably into a stroke.
Just for fun.
But, you know, women love sales. So, if, let's say, you signed your child up before June thirtieth for forty dollars instead of fifty dollars, would there be incentive for people to buy their passes early before we know if it's gonna be a wet, cold summer or a hot, dry summer and try to get more passes sold sooner? And then it goes to a regular price on the first of July? I mean, if you're gonna really think about what we're drawing, what we're, we're trying to do is get more kids to the pool. That's the whole idea. I think fifty dollars, if you have four kids, is a lot of money.
I, I just tried doing that with a event that I was chairman of and didn't work.
It, it didn't, it didn't work for me. So, Jeff, do you have some experiences that-
I do, and I, I agree with you, Mike. I don't think that it works. I, I, it, it is difficult, I know, but people don't think about the ten dollars and they may not have the fifty until July. So they may not be able to take advantage of it in June. I, and I think it gets complicated.
I think it would work in situations of families of three kids, 'cause they'll say, ah, for ten bucks, I'm just gonna do the daily pass thing. I make it out of it cheaper in the end. But if you have that little incentive to buy the family pass, it's cheaper now, 'cause you're buying it earlier. You're like, well, I better buy it, just in case the kids go a lot.
Jeff?
Do we have any data to support that, that reducing the price would really increase it? I mean, we, we-
No, it's a gamble.
It is a gamble. Let me just tell you that if you were, if you were, if you were serious about, you know, didn't send me into stroke and actually just made my brain work. This is what, if you want, if you like that idea, what I would do is keep the rate at fifty and make it si- it'd be sixty dollars on the- Sorry. No, no, I don't, I don't chase deals. It's a penalty in reverse is what it is.
What we're doing isn't working. So, we've gotta do something different. And if we don't start thinking something different, nothing's gonna happen. It's gonna be more of the same.
Yeah.
So if we do exactly the same thing, the same thing is gonna happen. I think we, we have to start budgeting the money out of the regular, where we do the budget, put it in there for the pool, stop taking it out of the watershed fund, and try to get families to, to buy the passes, if that's, you know, or hope we have a really hot summer and they go daily to the, to, to it. But I think it, we've gotta do something different that we're doing now.
I like the idea of like fifty dollars up until June fifteenth and after that it's sixty.
That's what I was saying, June fifteenth.
It's a, yeah.
And we're ready to roll by June fifteenth.
Well, whatever the date is.
I just think-
We have to buy ours for the swim team by the fifteenth of May, so.
So swim team's locked in.
It's kinda like a dog license, uh, but, hey. The only, the only, I, I get it. The only thing that I just can't help to say, about to say this is that, you know, uh, some people are the ones, some of the people that can't pay the fifty in time are the ones that don't have the fifty. And so you're, you know, you know, to a lot of people, they don't care, all right? They got plenty of money. But to somebody who's trying to scrimp to get the fifty and they can't quite come up with it, now they gotta pay sixty. That's the only downside, downside of it, so. Uh, you know, I, I think this has been some great brainstorming, all right? And I, I, uh-
Move on the point here, we still gotta-
'Cause I tell you, you're gonna be talking, you're gonna, you're gonna have the same conversation. You're exactly right, Lynn, is like, you know.
Do the same, get the same result.
Exactly, exactly.
So we have a motion. Rennie, do you wanna read it back to us, Joan?
Rennie moved to adopt the fee schedule as presented by the manager.
And, I thought he had an and, did you have an and?
Nope, nope.
He was gonna do, he was gonna do his two motions.
Two motions.
So.
Lowell seconded it.
Lowell seconded it. And so, any other discussion? I'd like to vote on this, uh, motion as, as it is and it'll either pass or it'll fail. And then we can move on if that's people. So all those in favor of it, say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Okay. The ayes have it. Bob, you would like-
Just a question. Mel and I and, and Joan and I have had this discussion regarding taxes, payment of taxes. And I'm thinking along the same lines for payment of these fees as opposed to a fifty dollar lump sum in June when kids are getting out of school and there's moving up parties and all that other kinda crap that costs money. Why not, could we set up something that would, at the beginning of the previous year, or the beginning of the year, basically, provide a bucket for interested people, people interested in getting their kids signed up for various summer programs? Set up a bucket for them to drop some money into every week? Little bits and pieces at the end of the season, at the end of the, you know, the beginning of the season, the beginning of the summer, they're paid up. Give them a longer period of time to-
Advance payment.
Thank you, advance payment, to fund, to fund their kids' activities.
I think that's, that's a great idea and I think it's something that we need to look at. Uh, it's not something that we can resolve tonight, but we should take that under consideration as to, you know, other, are there other areas within the city that we need to do similar things?
Joan, we start selling passes just soon as we print them, right? We don't, we, you can, I know that we, when we have, uh, right, Joan? I mean, we, we sell, we sell passes at a city hall when they're ready.
We go to, first time we sell a pass is that swim, swim team's sign up.
Okay, but it doesn't-
'Cause they all come in.
Right, but it doesn't have to be done that way.
You know, they're not-
Right, but there is, but I, there is some efficiencies about what we do. There, you know, about lesson sign up, about swim team sign up. One of the things that has, as, there was a time when there was a lot, a very high, a higher, much higher percentage of people that went to swim team sign up, all right?
Yeah.
And that's not the case any longer and that's a problem. I, and, you know, so, we have, uh, one of the things that we, you know, there, there is some efficiencies. Just keep in mind, only, there's only three of us working at city hall and so it is important that we do things efficiently. And it is efficient for Joan to sit down and sell fifty passes in an hour and a half, all right? It is not efficient for her to sell fifty passes over a three-week period. It's just the nature of how we do business at city hall. I just, I just wanna throw that out to you. But certainly, you know, Joan and I could have that conversation about, do we wanna start, you know, you know, we could sell them ear- we could sell them earlier, but I don't know if that's, I don't know- Yeah, I mean, like, for instance, let me just tell you something. I don't know if this would've mattered, but we, we registered three hundred and sixty dogs, all right? Yeah, you know, we, maybe we could've sold some pool passes, you know, why we're there for people that can afford it. So, it's something, if they're, if we're there waiting on them, it's something to think about, you know?
Another idea might be to add a flyer in one of the sewer water bills. They send you the check and they pick up their pool pass at the pool when it opens. You don't have to send it out to anybody, it just is there and they flip through and say-
You got your article ready?
There you go.
For City Voice?
No, I guess-
But you're right, there are, there are ways to-
I guess my thought was to not have Joan or you chasing the people. Have them coming to you by promoting and making it really, really simple and easy for them to send money to the city. How do you promote, the, the, what is your current promotional system?
One of the things that we're looking into, Bob, is Joan's gonna start looking at, is trying to find time to look at ways to use methods of payments, either direct, uh, direct from their checking account, uh, credit card. And so we're, she's, she's gonna be looking at that, uh, and hopefully, uh, we can do something like that. We really need to keep moving here, 'cause we're gonna be here till midnight.
I'll make the other motion.
Okay.
Just passed one. Uh, I'll make a motion that we adopt the pool budget, um, as recommended by the city manager with one change, and that in, in the line, uh, revenue line, watershed funds operating, change that to eleven thousand dollars.
Which is what line?
Five seven one?
Five six?
Five six zero two oh eight dot zero zero.
Okay. We have a motion to change the amount of money from nine thousand to eleven thousand, money coming out of the watershed fund. We have a first, uh, motion by Rennie, seconded by Lowell. Discussion.
We would backfill that two thousand addition if we were to find money otherwise, or will we just do that?
We can just do that.
Okay.
Get the money in.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
One nay.
Two?
Two nay. Okay, review, uh, and re-adopt conflict of interest policy. Mel?
So this was the result of some conversation at the last meeting, uh, and also, Mike and I had a conversation and, uh, and this is what I've come up with, um, as you can see. And I, and I think that one of the things that, you know, is, is, is really important here, and that's about disclosure. Because, just because you have a conflict of interest, it doesn't mean that you don't participate. I mean, 'cause you gotta really read the, read A1 to tell you about, that's supposed to tell you whether or not you have a conflict of interest and it's about personal or financial. And then does, how, how you're gonna handle your own disclosure. And, uh, and then, once that's established, then you move into the recusal. So I think that, and I can tell you, you know, lots of times we, uh, we, we all kind of find ourselves not even thinking about, uh, conflict of interest. And for instance, I'll, I'll, I'll pick on, I'll pick on Jeffrey here just for the hell of it, 'cause he's got good wide shoulders, all right? Uh, Andrew is a member of the Bixby Board, all right? And, you know, they're making a presentation about money. City council didn't take any action. There's no act, there was no action, it was a good presentation. However, had, had there, had they been looking for action, you know, Jeff needs to, needs to pay attention to that, all right? Probably disclose, but conclude, but be able to conclude under, under, uh, under Article Five and then act however he feels like, because the way that I've written this is that you don't have to leave the table, but you can. It says as you can. So one of the things is that it's really, this is written, um, it's not really all that different than it was before, but it's really about catching yourself, all right? And I know how it, I know how it can, can happen, all right? Uh, very easily. And, um, 'cause I can tell you, it's ha- it's, I, you know, I'm sure it's happened to myself, but- but I went to a meeting not that long ago, a regional planning commission meeting, and they, they talked for about two hours, and they, and they got all the way done to the end. It was about a solar array. And they got all the way to the end of the discussion, and they called for the question, and a person says, I, I'm gonna abstain because I'm a member of the Shoreham Co-op. It's like, well, it's fine time to tell us, now after you've participated for two hours, okay? Or anyway. I just throw that out to you that, you know, when in doubt, disclose. That's what the, that's really what the whole key is here.
One of the things I was gonna do at the beginning of the meeting, but I, I didn't wanna agitate anybody in any way, and that is not my intent, people here, is I've, you know how we have any, uh, changes in the agenda? Well, I put some verbiage about, does any, uh, one feel the need to disclose about any items on the agenda? I can make that a standard practice, and it's not trying to insult anybody, but maybe it'll trigger. So, if you want it there, I will add it. If you don't want it there, I won't add it. It's just a helpful reminder, cause there's, there's just things that are gonna, gonna crop up. Now, I'm gonna pick on Mark a little bit.
My what? Just for a hundred dollars.
Okay. Oh, one thirty, if it was an out of town.
That's true.
Yeah, so, it, it.
And I'm on the school board, and I've talked about the pool ad nauseam for the last year, so.
Yep, so, and, and I realize, everybody's saying, we're, we're a small city, and, you know, there's only so many of us. If we were to go to court, I, I don't think that that would be a, that would be an excuse, not a justifiable reason to say, well, we're a small town, or a small city. That, that wouldn't work. So, a- again, anything that I'm trying to, um, do here is, is to improve on something that is good, if we can make it slightly better. I told Mel the story of, back when I was in the National Guard, uh, for those that know George Bevo, um, he was my first sergeant. And one of the things he, he would, he was teaching me is how to set up a good perimeter defense for your forces. And he says, whatever you do in life, you always want position improvement. So, always look at what you got, and see if there's ways that you can improve upon it. And that's what I was trying to strive here for, is I wanna cover your back, and I hope if I do something wrong, you cover my back. If I'm doing something wrong, speak to me. You know, I, I open door here. So, it's, it's with all good intent, not picking on anybody. So, having said that, any more mouth that you wanna?
I don't like that, no.
Any other discussion on this as to, I'm curious where people stand? Can they live with it the way it is now, or do they wanna leave it the way it was?
I'm not sure what you mean by that.
The previous.
Make a motion to accept this, or?
No, yeah.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to accept the conflict of interest policy as written here.
And, and, okay, motion?
Second.
I don't know who got it out first.
Doesn't matter.
Both of them.
This is, that is the one with the, they added underlined areas. Um, I, uh, from a language perspective, I, I think that we probably, if, if we're gonna do this, we probably should not have the deletion of the, in which he or she has a conflict of interest pursuant to the following. I think that still re, needs to remain in there. Um, I'm assuming that, um, the, the intent of this is that if someone recuses themselves, so they, they're found to be in, in a conflict of interest, one way or another, either they find, or the council finds them in a conflict of interest, then they may remove themselves from their position at the bench and go into the audience, essentially. Is that, is this what it's intended to?
Yes.
To mean?
It is. That, that part, yes. Where, if, and you and I've already had a conversation about this, is if Rennie wants to do a presentation from the partnership, I feel the separation from the council, and it's more of a, I don't know what the right word is I wanna use, is the, there's a separation at that point where Rennie would do his presenting from there, not from the council table. And comments, please?
Yes, but I don't mean, I meant it in the context of, not every time that I may have a, a comment about the partnership is doing this, or whatever, and that is in the normal flow of conversation, and any one of us who belong to other organizations are gonna have those comments.
Yep.
And we stay at the council table. Uh, however, I don't have a problem with, um, in my own instance, um, of if I'm going to request a budget allocation from the council, or something like that, going into the audience and presenting it to the council, because I'm no longer acting as a council member, I'm acting as the president of the Virgin's partnership. And if it makes it easier for the people who are watching to understand the difference between the positions that I'm taking, um, then I don't have a problem with that. If this language is, if it's doing that, not for the back and forth that we may have.
No.
From various organizations, but if we are doing something of significance, which requires a vote of the council, and one of us is tied to that organization, then I don't have any problem with going into the, um, into the audience and, and being a, a member of the public for that particular thing. I don't have any problem with that, if this is what the language is intended to do. I do think, though, if we're gonna keep that language, we knew, we need to add the, the, the line that was deleted, uh, in order for it to continue to have its meaning.
The, in, in paragraph A?
Yeah, it was just, it, it was deleted.
In which?
In which he or she has a conflict of interest pursuant to the following. I think that still needs to stay in there.
So, so, Rennie has a legal background. I'm a math guy, all right? So, I, I, you know, I don't have a problem yielding to somebody has a legal background, but I can tell you that the, the, the way that I read the old language, it contradicted Article Five. Because, one of the things, the way that this thing reads is that the first thing you determine is whether or not you have a conflict of interest or not. And, and that gets determined, yes or no. And if you do, and it's clear that you do, then you move on to whether or not, despite that conflict of interest, you have the right to participate or not. And so, I didn't like the old language, because it, it, it contradicted the one before. Cause the old language said, a member shall recuse him or herself from any matter in which he or she has a conflict of interest pursuant to the following, all right? That tells you that there is no way, there is no way to participate when you feel that you can act fairly objectively in the public. That's what I didn't like about that old language.
Well, I, you, but you put in the language in the beginning.
That's right.
That talks about that. I'm not saying taking that out.
No, 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 I, that's why I put it up on the front.
I'm just saying that the, the last part of the line there, I think, needs to be back in there. That's, that's all I'm saying. Maybe it doesn't make that much difference. We put it on the floor and it's late.
Want to test it for a year?
Certainly can.
So, we'll leave it as is, Rennie?
Might as well.
Okay. We have a motion as second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So, Kerry, thank you for your.
So, it's this one here? This is it?
It's the one I do.
Yep, that's it.
Okay, all right. So, we need one of these, let me tell you what we'll do. We'll need, we need one of these signed.
I got one here, Mel.
Okay.
And if something comes up, and we find something else, we can correct this at any point.
Absolutely, yeah.
During the year, so.
Okay.
Okay, um.
Waiver of petition policy. Mel, I'm gonna have you tell a little story about, about.
This is Joan's, this is Joan's story.
Well, we started it, we were talking about it a few meetings ago, and I think it was Mark who said, if, I'd like to see a copy of the policy. And I said, I'll find it and send it to everyone. I couldn't find it. And then I ran into it, and it's like, oh, I'm gonna send it to everyone while I know where it is. So, that's why I just scanned it and sent it with any, without any big to do. Didn't want any comments or anything on it, just wanted you to all see the written policy. And, so that's what I did, when I sent it to everyone.
And my intent to reply off is not to start a discussion, but to provide information. And I do have call into the city, legions of city and towns, and we've been playing phone tech, cause I, I don't, it's a gray area of whether or not I violated open meeting law by, whether that is discussion that I replied all, or whether that was confirmation that was not part of discussion, but.
Garrett Baxter will figure that out for ya.
Yeah, but we, we did, uh, I did provide Mel a copy of that email, and we put it into public records. No, we are covered, that there is no violation of it by my presenting the thought I had about mending that part, so that they have to come in the year before and say hi to us.
I'm not, I'm, you know, I'm not worried, I'm not worried about that. What I'm, what, one of the things is, this is the policy, all right? And, um, you know, you know, if, you know, if you wanna have a change, if you wanna change this policy, all I'm suggesting is, is that if you're gonna change it, let's do it way in advance of petition filing. Because I can tell you, you, you could, uh, tonight, this is on the agenda, waiver of petition policy, social service agency funding request. You, you know, somebody could move to, it's just a policy, it's not ordinance. The city, somebody could move to, uh, to repeal this policy tonight, done. Joan would, Joan would get in touch with the twenty or so agencies to let them know that there is no policy, and therefore, if you wanna be on the March Town meeting ballot, you need five percent of our voters. That's what would happen, or anything in between. You know, all I'm sug, all I'm sug, and you could do, you could do that on the first of January, if you wanted to, but I, that's.
Not a good idea.
That's not a good idea. So, anyway, if, if the, if there's, if the city council, this, uh, you know, it's not like we come back, the city council comes back and re-adopts all of these policies every year, but you, you know, the city council ought to know existing policy, uh, and should, should revisit it once in a while, just to see if it still makes sense.
Well, because of the hour, I'd say let's postpone this.
But I do think there should be conversation.
Anybody have any problem with doing that?
No.
Okay, we'll move it to, uh, May ninth's agenda. Thank you, Lynn, for helping. City Council calendar, anybody?
And we know, Jeff, you're not gonna be here in May. We know that already.
Rub it in, Jeff, rub it in.
And I will not be here in June.
At all?
Not for any, any of the meetings, uh, cause I will be very far away from here. Um, however.
Have a safe trip.
However, I will be in communication, uh, because I know it's budget time, and so my intention is to hopefully get all of the, the paperwork electronically, and I will respond to my concerns about the budget and so on, in that way.
Will you be back by June thirty?
Maybe.
Okay. No, I just kinda wondering, cause then we have to pass the budget towards the end of the, the month. So, okay, well, we'll stay in touch by email. Okay, uh, so, can I have a motion on adopting the calendar as is?
I'll make a motion.
Up. Uh, Rennie got it out first. Lowell seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, Kerry, city manager's report?
Uh, so, anyway, I've, my budget report is a little bit more updated than yours, and I did scan through it today. My biggest concern is that interest earnings. I can tell you, we got a thirty thousand dollar hole that is not gonna go away, just, just so you know. Um, the, everything else seems to be, uh, seems to be just fine. So, that's that one. This one here, Mike, I still, I still, I, I don't wanna just keep putting this off, but I really, you know, at one of these meetings, I really wanna go through this, uh, this capital improvement in special funds budget again. I've done it before to remind people of which things have policies, which things don't have policy, and it, but I don't want it to be a ninety-second discussion. I'd like to, you know, make sure that we got, you know, five or ten minutes to go through it. So, I'll, I'll just keep, keep it on until, till we can.
May ninth, and, and we'll make sure that this does happen on May ninth.
Yeah, okay.
Is there a way to get maybe some email or a memo that you could just give us a quick description discussion, so that you're not having to explain the beginning part that we're already?
Yeah, I could write, I could write a memo. Uh, I, I made the mistake one time of using a dictaphone, and twenty-seven pages later, all right, so, uh. Anyway, um, I, I, I hear ya, I hear ya. Cause I think it is important that it get out of my head and onto a piece of paper about which things do have policies, written policies, and which ones don't, or which ones are actually governed by a law. So, I wanna try to get this, I, I, I wanna make sure, if we're gonna have a cover sheet of explanation, I want that to be not more than one page, not more than one page. And let me see if I can possibly do that. Okay?
Can we move that up into the business portion of the next meeting as well? Just so we.
Sure.
We're not the tail landed.
Yep.
Waning.
Yep.
Good idea, thank you.
Uh, you know, Mike, we were gonna talk, you talk, you know, we, there's a couple, a couple things related to, uh, one related to this year, and another related to next year. Uh, let's talk about this year's. They're gonna be doing some work on the railroad, uh, the crossing on Route Seven between Moncton Road and, and Route twenty-two A, if you will. And that, that's gonna be reduced to one-lane traffic during this project that starts on the first of May, I think you said, Mike. And I, I, I just wanna let you know, they, at one point, they talked about, uh, uh, they talked about actually stopping traffic and rerouting traffic, and, and obviously, the concern is the impact on the center of town. So, I just wanna let you know that they are gonna maintain one-way traffic. Uh, Mike and I, um, this was kind of a sidebar discussion, George, Mike, myself, Carolyn, can't think of her last name, and, and another two gentlemen from V-Trans. And we actually, we arranged this meeting, really, to talk about the waybridge, bridge replacement, is what we really talked about. But while we were, while we were there, Mike brought up the, uh, this railroad, uh, this railroad crossing. So, so, one of the things, just so that, uh, you know, everyone knows, there's gonna be an impact, all right? And I've, I've tried to explain to these folks that you have one-way traffic on Route twenty-two A. I mean, you're gonna have cars backed up to the Eagles Club and out to Assembly of God Church in a heartbeat. And people are gonna start trying to figure out how to get the hell out of this mess. And this is not gonna be pleasant, uh, on this, uh, uh. Don't try to back out of your driveway during this, this thing, Lynn, so.
I know, cause you have it Fridays anyway.
All right, so I wanna let you know about that. And then also, that, just to clarify, because there's been some confusion about the waybridge, bridge, thinking, wow, there, it's gonna happen after field days this year, and blah, blah, blah. And that's, we really thought at one point that was the case, and that's not the case.
They're doing some work.
They're doing some work, but the bridge is not gonna close until after field days.
Uh, no, it's June first of, of twenty eighteen, and it's gonna, gonna be back open by August one of twenty eighteen.
Oh, okay. So, it's on the other side, on the other side?
That's on the other, other side.
Okay. So, anyway, one of the things that, you know, the, why this is so important is, is that if you think about that bridge closing, and, and you have, you have people's northbound traffic on twenty-two A, in some respects, trying to go south on seven, and all of the permutations of that, all right? And the key here, what I've been trying to impress upon these people, is you can't send these tractor-trailer trucks to the center of town. City Virgin's put up with that until, until the K-Hart Crossing was done. And so, signage, I think that this meeting was very good to let them, to let them know how much of a concern we have. This thing is gonna be, this is gonna have bad impact, there's no question about it. And it's really about minimizing the impact, because we can't have, I, I did it today, it pissed me off. Uh, I was coming up to the traffic light, and somebody from the Indiana, baked fifty-three footer, you know, basically, just thumbed his nose at me and made me back up to, uh, to School Street. I can't imagine he was going to Bubbs Barn. But anyway, it's about GI, the GPS telling you where to go. You know, that's what, that's what's happening, is they're, they're trying to get somewhere, and this, if you don't have a commercial, and actually, it's a class-one road, all right? So, even if you have a commercial, um, device in your, in your truck, it'll send you down, it'll send you down that road. And as you know, I mean, you, you, you know, you, this doesn't work, all right? And so, yeah, I, I did, I backed, I wanted to stop and jump out, but it's like, you know, I, that's okay, Mel, I know, it's okay. You know, but, you know, so if you multiply that times, you know, a thousand trucks, if you think about the number of trucks that we're, that we're dealing with. the number of trucks that we're, that we're dealing with here, so, it's next, eight, two thousand and eighteen, we're trying to make sure that there is proper signage, so that people go, if they're gotta go through Virgin's, go through, don't, don't be trying to turn right and, and causing that mess, you know, go through.
You'll be looking at the timing on the stoplight, too.
To make sure that it's more beneficial, but don't try to come off a side street to go on, you're gonna have to go to the light to get anywhere.
So, look.
On your notice.
Other thing, about thirty kids, not kids, you know, high school kids, we got thirty people working for us this week, this is spring, spring break, so, what is it, twenty-five?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, uh, the working for the crew.
I thought you were talking about the thirty, thirty first graders that Joan got to see.
Oh, yeah, 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 we did that, 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 too. Uh, so, anyway, all of our parks are, are being cleaned up, raked, so on, it's, uh, they'll be working right straight through, and I'm not wild about this weather, uh, 'cause if, you don't really like the rain, but anyway, every, everything will certainly look a heck of a lot better by the end of the week, they, they do a nice, uh, they do a nice job. The pool is empty, all right, and, uh, so that's on the crew's plate to get repairs, uh, get repairs ready, you know, the clock's gonna tick away, uh, tick away quickly, so. So, the items that I have here for tonight.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mel. Um, I'm gonna try to shorten my version by a lot, because I've got a half a page full of notes here. See, my proposed Virgin's senior citizen council had some great conversation with Rennie, he's emailed some stuff back and forth, um, and, um, Mark has sent some comments as well, and I have questions, but I didn't wanna violate any, uh, open meeting law, so I, I didn't send anything, but basically, um, this document is just to start dialogue, and Rennie has pointed out that, uh, you can do it that way, but you put some wicked restraints as far as open meeting laws go, and so it's, there's many other options to do, so, without going into those at this point, I'm gonna defer this on to the next meeting, so if, if you do have some comments, you know, send me an email, uh, and it's all good part of a conversation, that I'll try to figure out how we can blend it in at a, at a meeting, so, um, other topics of interest, Mr. Lowell, are you all set up for Greenup Day, and do you need, what do you need from the city, are you gonna work with Mel on that?
I'll work with Mel.
Okay, good. Uh, Lynn, Harmony Park, any updates?
We have, um, yes, we have picked the instruments with the help of, um, a lot of people that live in the basin, that was one of our concerns, um, and we will be going, now that we have what we want and where the site has been marked, so if anybody would like to go down to the basin, there's going to be, um, some markings of where the instruments are going to be, it is high and dry.
Did, did they talk about, uh, Green Mountain Powers right away?
Well, I, I've gotta talk to Mel about that, I just found out about it.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's, that would be a concern.
Yeah, and that, Matt brought that up, Matt, Danal brought it up, yeah, so, I've gotta talk to him about it, and then I've gotta find out if we need a permit, but the design has been, um.
Beautiful.
Chose.
Excellent. Um, anything else? Okay, just to let.
So, here's, you know, the building is over twelve, is, is over eighty square feet, so you're definitely, you need to go to the DRB with that.
That, that is something totally, that's, all she's doing is the instruments, that's, that's, that's gonna be standalone pieces of instruments.
Yep.
Spread out, so it's gonna be, you know, so that is different.
So, that, so that, so something specific should come to the city council to act on, we need something specific, and, yeah.
So, okay, um, just to let you know, uh, last week was a little bit on the busy side, I went to Montpelier to support the mayor's coalition on a thirty-five million dollar, uh, housing, uh, bu, uh, bond, or, uh, bill that was going through, we were trying to get another million, uh, because, uh, spending the money now, it would just, that million would come back to us in a heartbeat, uh, and so, and also, the contaminated soil, uh, bill that's going through, uh, we're concerned about the levels Vermont is, is restrictions are more than any other state around us, and I don't know what they're trying to do there, so we're, we're trying to get them to change it to match more like what Connecticut, New Hampshire, New York are, more in line with that. Um, ran into Diane, and she's trying to set up a meeting with the Secretary of Transportation to talk about truck traffic going through Virgin's and what could be done, um, that'll be somewhere around the middle of the month, um.
There actually is a transportation, Addison County Transportation Summit scheduled for May eleventh in the Opera House. Um, I know Shannon sent, Shannon distributed the, Shannon Haggott distributed the flyer, and I'll send that out to the board. Um, it's, I'm not, I'm not really sure off the top of my, it says sponsored by the town of Waybridge, and I'm, so I'm really not sure, but it's at the Opera House, but I'll send you, I'll send everybody the flyer.
Please do.
Actually, that, they said that, that they were wrong, 'cause it really is sponsored by the city and the partnership to have that summit.
It is, well, it says on the bottom, sponsored by town Waybridge, but I'll send it to you, Rennie.
It wasn't that meeting that they were planning, when, when, that we met, and they were talking about pulling the people in, so. There's gonna be a pre-meeting of the Waybridge Bridge project, and they wanted to meet somewhere, and I mentioned that possibly one could be had for Virgin's residents, too, so that they know what's going on when we get closer to the project, but, I don't know. Okay, to bring this to a fairly quickly, a quick end here, just, I handed this out because to recap one-on-one meetings, and basically, pool was number one priority, Joan, I can give you a copy of this if you didn't get.
I gave it to him.
Okay, um, sidewalks was second, and crosswalks, and so you can read down through it, I'm not gonna labor on it, um, people that are involved, and I've misspelled act or, it's A-C-T-R, all capital letters, um, and needs and wants, uh, Lynn brought up, and I don't, I'm not trying to throw underneath the, she, she would like to see some sort of a, a project board or a, a, a report, so, to try, I asked Judy to kinda design something, and we threw it out to Lynn, uh, so this is just a, a mock-up of, of possibility, I don't know if it's anything that, uh, the council is interested in doing, um, so be thinking about that, we'll talk more at the next meeting, uh, as you can see, go down through, uh, the needs and wants, um, one of the biggest things that I got out of City Hall is, um, council members having a better understanding of what goes on with all the departments, especially there at City Hall, and the demands that's driven down by state level, uh, their jobs have just magnified, uh, tenfold with the stuff that has to come, or, and it's, it's, uh, it's, it's a lot of work. And the very last one, I, I don't wanna let go, is, um, the action plan, we need to put in an action plan, Mel is gonna be retiring in about sixteen months, we don't wanna get caught behind the eight ball, and now that budget's coming up.
I think it's Rennie's turn.
I, I, I would like to introduce, or, an idea, as, I really feel that it would be good to bring somebody on board prior to him totally retiring, uh, he's gonna, he's gonna go away for a month and have a good time, but I just think that it would be nice to bring somebody in, so if we're gonna do something that's gonna fold over into a budget year, we, when we're doing our budget, we need to be looking at the dollars and cents and how that's gonna impact us, so I just introduce that now, so.
You were on that last night, over.
We're not lying in there.
No, 'cause it wasn't on the, it wasn't really on the agenda, so we can't really discuss it.
Okay.
Other than, it's an announcement, um, but we can put it on the next agenda. Um, so, having said that, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
Quickly, I just want to remind everybody, the Greenup Day is May sixth, and we'd appreciate all the volunteers that wanna come out, and after that, I will make a motion to adjourn.
I hope to be there. Motion by, uh, Lowell, seconded by Rennie, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Be quiet. So, Kerry, you like my new toy? I did notice your new toy.